Okay, good evening, everyone. Bonsoir tout le monde. We acknowledge that the land upon which we gather is the traditional onceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. Called order, I just have a few brief recognitions. MS, multiple sclerosis awareness month. We have, if you've noticed, the MS flag is flying on our city flagpole as well as the city hall tower. City Hall Tower will be illuminated in red this evening, both of symbols and recognition of an awareness campaign for multiple sclerosis, a chronic, often disabling neurological disease affecting an estimated one in 400 Canadians and over 90,000 across the country. And MS Canada is the only organization in Canada that supports both MS research and services for people with MS and their families. Annual fundraising events such as the MS Walk, MS Bike, and A&amp;W Canada's Burgers to Beat MS Campaign, support programs to enhance the lives of people affected by MS and their families and supports MS Research in Canada. Together, we'll find ways to connect and empower the MS community to create positive change and see a world free of multiple sclerosis. And as you can see, tonight, I'm wearing my Moosehide pin as my commitment to stop violence and respect the women and children in my life. I'll wear it proudly on Moosehide Campaign Day, May 16th, 2024. So today, I pledge to take a stand against gender-based violence. I encourage everyone to do the same and visit moosehidecampaign.ca to find ways to get involved. And then the... This week is also a prevent... Right here. It is Family Violence Prevention Week. Let's come together to raise awareness, support survivors, and work towards a future free from family violence. Together, we can make a difference. I am wearing the purple on... I'm asking everyone to wear the purple pin on Wednesday, May 15th, to show your support. And tomorrow at noon hour, there will be the Charlottetown Walk in Silence for Family Violence Prevention. And we'll get together at, I believe, Rochwood Square to start the walk. And last, this past week, we had the death of one of our esteemed psychiatrists, Dr. Angus Beck, and his brother. Norman is a councillor here, so I'm just asking council members to rise for a moment of silence in the memory of Dr. Angus Beck. Thank you. So I will start off by asking any declarations of conflict of interest? Okay. Do you have one?
Your worship, I mean, there is a resolution on the community fridge that I may be in conflict of, I'll step out if possible.
Anyone else? And that's under planning, I believe? It's to go to public consultation? Yep. Okay, the agenda, approval of the agenda. Moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, second by... Okay, seconded by councillor McKinnon. Questionnaire, councillor Duran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Three months ago, we had asked for a legal opinion on, councillor Twill did, for asking questions to the councillor, the chair of the committee. So, and then the next month, I asked, you know, did we get the opinion back?
Yeah.
And we didn't.
No.
Now we're 90 days out.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think that's acceptable.
Yeah.
To myself. You can get a legal opinion from a huge law firm, they should be able to do that. So what I'm saying tonight is, in lieu of not getting a legal opinion to say, no, you can't ask questions, I want to be able to ask questions to the chair, if that's okay.
You can ask questions, but under the procedural bylaw, the presiding chair of the council meeting is the office of the mayor, just like you're the chairman of the Water and Wastewater Standing Committee.
Sure.
As presiding officer, you can lay out the rules, the parameters, and that's what I was advised by legal opinion, that I can do that, but they want to fact-check that with other municipalities. So I've said that the question on the floor, whether it's a report or a resolution, you get to speak twice, five minutes, three minutes, in eight minutes, and if you have read your report, I think that's plenty of time.
Sure. And that's on the report.
Yeah.
But I want to ask questions on other things, so could we get a point of order on that?
You can get, you can ask questions on any of the resolutions twice, the report twice.
I understand.
Yeah.
But other than the report or the resolution, if I have a question that I want to ask, say, the chair of Public Works or the chair of HR, then I should be able to, free to ask that question, right?
Within the two questions? Yeah?
Within the two questions, okay.
Yeah, no, no. The report is, if it's not in the report, okay, to clarify that, why would you be asking a question when it's not in the report? That's what I'm trying to clarify here.
For the specific reason that I've never gotten a direct answer. You know, I've asked questions, I didn't get an answer, so here, in a public forum, I can ask a question, and if the chair can't answer it, we usually go to the manager.
Correct.
So then the manager has to answer the question.
Correct.
You know, and I know what we're doing is giving an email to the manager or to the chair previously, and instead of at a council meeting, but I find that it's best to get the answer here, because there's a lot of constituents that say, listen, councillor Duran, can you ask a question? I'll ask the manager, I'll get back to you, he doesn't get back to me, or she doesn't get back to me. I just find this more prudent to ask the question here, either to the chair or to the manager, and get an answer.
Yeah.
And then when I get home, I can phone the resident and say, listen, I asked a question to council, you can watch it on YouTube, that I did say what you wanted me to say, and I got an answer.
Yeah, but if it's not in the report, councillor Duran, like, this moment that we have, the second Monday of, or second Tuesday of every month, is an opportunity to go through all the businesses of the standing committees. And those standing committees present reports, and then those reports are based on the deliberations, discussions, and debate of issues that were raised at the committee level. Now, if you want to raise an issue at a committee level, as you know, that live stream is on all the time, so you're more than welcome to go to any...
But you're missing my point.
No, I'm not missing the point.
You are.
No, I'm not.
You're...
No, I'm not.
You're telling us you can only ask about the report.
That's right.
Okay. Where does it say in the MGA that you're allowed to only ask about the report?
As a presiding officer under the procedural bylaw.
Point of order. Can you get a legal opinion?
We can get the legal...
But we asked it 90-some days ago.
Yeah, and I did get...
And you didn't get it.
I did.
Nobody gets it.
I did get a verbal opinion, I did get a verbal opinion. Now, if you want a written opinion, I'll get you one. But as presiding officer, just like you at your committee level, you can set up the parameters on how questions can be asked, or how long they can be asked. I've already made it clear, on the report that's presented by any of the standing committees, you have two questions, five minutes, three minutes. Then when there's a resolution, you have two questions, five minutes, three minutes. So councillor Duran, I think I'm being very open-minded and transparent when it comes to providing the opportu... We have three-hour meetings here on a regular basis.
That's right.
And those three-hour meetings, as I know some of you by 8 o'clock, I'm done, I'm spent, but we're not done with the business. I need to get done with the business as presiding officer. So I'm trying to create, I've created the framework within all the committee levels that if you have committee-level meetings, questions related to your constituency at the committee level, you're more than free to go and speak and address those questions at the committee level. And that'll come up with the report when we meet, whether it's the second Tuesday of the month, or we also have the fourth Tuesday. So we have lots of opportunities.
This is the last time, and I'll sit down. So nowhere in the MGA does it say you're not allowed to ask questions. Am I correct on that?
No, you're allowed to ask questions, but...
So you're trying to say you're not allowed to ask questions. You're setting up the questions to be asked.
Questions.
Only on the report.
The questions are related to the report.
So the 90-day legal opinion that you were supposed to get.
Yeah.
And it doesn't, it's not coming forth.
Well, legally, I've been told early, but I know you like to have everything written, so we'll get a written report. But as presiding officer, all of us are presiding officers, are chairs of the committees. Like, again, this opportunity, the second Tuesday of every month, or the fourth Tuesday of every month, is a time for reports to come together, to be debated, discussed in this floor, and if you want to get it into this floor, you go up through the committee level, that's why we have standing committees.
But I've asked questions, and I haven't been given the answer. So when you come here, you should be able to get it.
Yeah, and you might not get the answer, but I have to, when I don't get answers to my questions, I follow up with the managers or the directors.
I do.
Yeah.
But I still don't get them. But I would like the legal opinion, so we're going in...
Written opinion.
Written opinion into four months.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Twill, we're going to move on.
Can I?
No, no, just one second. The names are not coming up here. The names. Okay. Councillor McCabe, you did have your...
Thank you. Because we head on the floor to approve the agenda, I just need to ask, before we approve it, I would like to withdraw one of the Public Works resolutions. Public Works Resolution Number Five, the speed hump policy. We deferred that last time, if you remember, because we were waiting on information for kilometers per speed hump delegation, and we haven't received that information yet. It hasn't come back through the committee yet. I'm not sure why it's in tonight's package, but I'm going to ask that it be removed. Public Works Resolution Number Five.
Number Five. Do you have that? Councillor Twill.
Just to follow up on councillor Duran's clarification, you know, ever since I've been a member of city council, we've always had that freedom to be able to ask questions. And, you know, the chair of the respective committee will say, thank you, I'll take that under advisement, and we'll try to get you an answer, you know, if you can't answer the same evening. So I think, I think we're going down a very dangerous slippery slope if, you know, we're going to start shutting down elected officials that are here to represent their constituents. This has always been the norm, it's always been the process. I think we've got to be careful here, Mr. Mayor, all due respect. We've got to be very, very, very careful. We don't want the community to think that as elected officials, we can't ask questions at a regular monthly meeting of city council. So I don't think anyone's abusing the privilege, I don't think anyone is out of line, out of character, but I do believe, you know, we should continue on with the tradition and the conventional process and procedures that we've had in this chamber, long before I even ran for city council.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think it's healthy, it's open, it's transparent, and it is truly accountable. So without further ado, I'd like to maintain that, you know, that decorum.
Yeah. Councillor Twill. This camera has changed how we've done business. More and more people have tuned into what we do in this chamber. This is the most open, transparent, and accountable chamber on Prince Edward Island. I can tell you that, because we make sure that what is said here has gone through committee, has gone through council, has gone through special meetings, and I think I've been very liberal in my way, small L liberal, in my way, in terms of how I allow members of council to participate. I've been criticized while in this chamber, oh, no, he's gone three times, he's gone... Look, guys, I've been very committed to openness, transparency, and accountability. Deputy Mayor, did you want to say something?
Sure, I was doing two things. One, I was seconding her deferral, and I just wanted to not only second it, but to say that I was even perplexed that it was even a consideration, considering we spent the last year and a half defining what is operational, what is governance, what is political, and then how all of a sudden councillors are supposed to figure out from a safety perspective when a speed hump is appropriate or not. But I'll leave it as seconding the deferral for this evening until we get a report back from Public Works. But just to circle back on questions and when to ask questions, and respecting what councillor Duran and councillor Twill are getting their heads around, I think what his worship is trying to say, and I think he's said it quite clearly, is that there's only so much time, and so each committee meets, we have things on our agenda, anybody can reach out to me and add it to the agenda, and then from here tonight, if you ask me questions that are not in my reports or are not pertinent to the resolutions we're speaking of, the only thing I can say to you is, thank you for your question, we'll add it to the next agenda, because I can't expect staff to be ready for things that we were not prepared to be ready for. So just to follow up on what his worship was saying, and I don't think it's about not having the ability to be able to speak freely and ask questions for your residents, but we only have so much time at a meeting to get the city business done, which is why we have these additional meetings, so, you know, that's kind of my understanding of it.
Yeah.
Your worship and council. Thank you.
I think the meetings have gone on three hours, four hours. I've said, look, you want to stay here till 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, I'll do it. Okay, planning the heritage. Oh, do we have to, first of all, vote on this? Okay, so we're voting on the...
Can I just answer, your worship?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So it was a point of order that was called. So what I want to draw your attention to is Section 4.3 of your procedural bylaw says that we will work with Robert's Rules of Order, and it's in Robert's Rules of Order that says that you can question and speak to the subject that's on the floor. So when your reports come through and your minutes come through, that's the subject that's on the floor, and that's why you ask questions according to that. Now, if you want to be able to ask other questions, there are different ways of setting up council agendas to be able to do that. Sometimes there's sections called councillor inquiries, that kind of subject line in there. In order to do that, though, you need to update your procedural bylaw to add that kind of section to the agenda. So that's where those rules are coming from. We can certainly provide a copy of Robert's Rules of Orders for members of council to look at, and we'll also pursue the legal opinion. Thank you.
Okay, let's, I want to get this done first. Yeah, no, I know, we have the deferral on the floor. You want to go with the deferral? Let's vote on the deferral, and then we'll come back to the questions. How many in favor of... Yes. Question on the deferral. How many in favor of the deferral? Please raise your hand. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. So if I understand correctly, we're looking to defer the speed hump policy again. We're here now on May 14th. Have residents that have been contacting and wondering when speed humps will be implemented throughout the city streets? So as we delay this further, what do we see, how do we see that rolling out? Like, by the time we come back here with whatever option and plan we're going with, how is this delaying the implementation of the speed humps that are necessary throughout the city? Do you have any direction on that?
Councillor McCabe.
Yep, I can tell you that basically this was late coming anyway, because in our original policy right now, I think it said March was the date for rollout, start time for the speed humps. I have, or whenever it was, regardless, at the end of the day, we have to kind of blend the previous with the new, I think this year anyway, Justin, because it was still, it was late coming to the table, but there's no sense bringing something to the table. We're going to have to just operate under our existing criterion policy until this new one is done, which is at status quo, unless, Joey, I don't know, or Albert, whoever's here, wants to correct me on that, would be my understanding.
So we'll continue on with the speed bumps as we have in the past. The speed bumps usually don't start going out till the third week of May or so, because we have the school buses still on the road, but they are scheduled to start here in another 10 days or so.
Okay. Question on the floor, do we want to vote for the deferral? All those in favor of the deferral? Okay. Agenda, who's in favor of the agenda? I need to move by councillor, no, it was moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by councillor McKinnon. All those in favor of the agenda? Okay. Okay, adoption of previous draft minutes. We have two sets of minutes. Regular meeting, April 9th, 2024, special meetings, April 23rd and April 30th, 2024. Moved by councillor McKinnon. Seconded by councillor McCabe. All those in favor? Okay. Business arise in air of the minutes. Councillor Twill, business arise in air of the minutes?
Yeah. A question was raised by the city, how the city can make the designation without the property's owner's consent. Deputy Mayor Jankoff advised that the legal opinion stated that city followed the procedures and process according to the Heritage Preservation Bylaw. Legal opinion, so the city, and I guess yourself, councillor, Deputy Mayor Jankoff, you know, you've made it public, that the legal opinion stated quite clearly that the city has the legal right to walk in and designate someone's property, regardless of whether they approve, they're consulted with, authorization, no authorization, no legal written consent, but the city has the legal right to do that, based on the legal opinion that you referenced. Now, based on you referencing the legal opinion, don't you think it'd be prudent for that legal opinion to be released to the public? So the public could see, I mean, we've already stated that the legal opinion said we have the legal right. I mean, I have an issue with that, but nonetheless, that's legal counsel said, I'm not so sure how successful we're going to be, nobody's given me the odds as to how successful the city of Charlottetown is going to be, and who's going to pay the legal cost, for example, when it goes to Iraq, or if it ends up down on Water Street. Right? So who pays the freight? So my question is, because, you know, that's the message of being conveyed to the community, that, no, the legal opinion says we can do that, that's fine, I do think, because, you know, we've made the legal opinion public in terms of, yes, we do have the legal right, I think that'd be more advantageous now, in terms of being open, transparent, and accountable... of being open, transparent, and accountable. I think we need to release the legal opinion so the broader community can read the legal opinion and, and understand the logic and the rationale behind the legal opinion.
Counsel Twill, are you referring in the reports, page four, under 10 Prince Street? Is that the one you're referring to? I just want to clarify it.
Page two, April 9th, 2024.
And it is about 10 Prince Street, correct?
That's exactly what it is.
Deputy.
Thank you, Counsel Twill, for your question. So the legal opinion was based on whether or not, at the stage that we were in, whether or not we had followed procedure, and it was concluded that we had followed procedure. Last month in our council package was a, was, I guess, what is permitted to release from a legal opinion, which is a report based on the legal opinion. So that would have been in our last month's package. And so what, what that recommended and confirmed was that we did follow the Preservation Bylaw through the Heritage Department that states that we can, that the heritage officer can proceed with a process to put a heritage designation on a property. So that's what the bylaw says. So where we're at right now is about halfway through that process, because what we voted on last month was to continue with the process from November. So we're only about halfway through that process, and so, and as for whether or not we can release a legal opinion, that's, my understanding is that's never happened before. It's, it's a rule. It's not my rule. It's a rule. So if somebody else can supersede that rule, it sure as heck can't be me. So I hope I've done the best I can to answer your question.
Counsel McCabe, and then Counsel Twill.
Actually, Deputy Mayor just said, I don't, I was under the understanding that we don't do legal opinions publicly, but...
Um, CAO, or Melanie, do we, background on that?
Yeah, thank you, Worship. So we don't release legal opinions, because when we do so, we lose privilege, and it's actually under the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act that the public body has right to confidences. So we want to protect that privilege in case there was any sort of legal issues that arose out of this where that opinion needed to be used.
Counsel Twill, second down.
Well, you know, that's all well and good, but we made, we made it public that the solicitor said, city solicitor said, the city's within its legal right to continue on the process and continue on when the legal opinion from the property owner, which was in council's package, stated quite clearly that they were opposed to the property being designated heritage and didn't want to embark upon that process. So we've already made, city's already made it public, so why not, why not showcase the logic and the rationale? It's already there. It's public. I mean, we referenced it. I mean, it's being referenced all the time, so why not just release it? I mean, their legal opinion on behalf of their client was in the package, so why would this be any different? And, you know, if, if you talk about confidentiality and client, uh, client, you know, client solicitor privilege, well, then you shouldn't be making it public as to whether or not the city has the legal right to proceed in that fashion. So you can't have it both ways. If you're going to say, yeah, we're within our legal right, then the community has a right to know. On what grounds? What did you base it on?
Deputy.
Thank you, and I think CAO Alenner had pointed out that, you know, our hands are tied in terms of our freedom of information, we lose privilege. The rest of it is, is way beyond my expertise and why we can and why we cannot, but just to reiterate, we are only halfway through the process, and council will have their opportunity to support the bylaw, that is, through the Heritage Preservation Bylaw. They will also have the option to put a notice of motion to make changes to the Heritage Preservation Bylaw. You will also have an opportunity to say yes or no to the heritage designation of 10 Prince Street once the process is done. But as for legal opinion, I can refer back to His Worship or CAO Mohammed if they want to have our lawyer speak to that for any additional clarification, but I, that's, that's about all I've got on that right now, Counsel Twill. I'll leave it to our other professionals.
Yeah, no, we'll have to leave it. Who was the lawyer there? I don't think it was Melanie that worked on that. It was Melanie, Melanie McKinnon. We can leave it for the next meeting, or it could be brought up at Planning, Development and Heritage Standing Committee meeting, which is, again, an open, transparent, and accountable meeting. So we'll leave it to them. Okay. We're going to move on to reports of standing committees of council. Do you have five resolutions? Okay.
Do you want me to give my report first?
Go ahead.
Thanks. Thank you. So, yeah, good evening, everybody, and the Design Review Board did not meet this month, the Affordable Housing Meeting Committee did not meet this month. The Heritage Board met on April the 29th, and copies of the reports and minutes are included in your package. Planning and Heritage Committee met on May the 7th. Again, copies of minutes and reports are in your package. Planning Board met on the 7th. Again, copies of reports, minutes are in your package. This evening, we have five resolutions. We have no first readings, and we have two second readings, and when the resolutions come up, I will do my best to answer any questions on the resolutions, and in the short term, if you have any questions on the report, I'll do my best to answer, and we also have our managers of Planning and Heritage here with us this evening, as well as the, as our director, Mike. So, thank you.
Counsel Twill.
My question is on a resolution that was passed by council previously, and it was regards to the relocation of the Outreach Center to Park Street. And one of the conditions of the relocation was that the provincial government would provide funding, additional funding, for six police officers. I've been asking that question on several occasions. I haven't got, haven't gotten an answer. I don't know if you can answer me tonight, but the mere fact that the province made that financial commitment to the City of Charlestown to fund six police officers, I'm looking for a status, a status report as to where we're at with respect to the additional six police officers. I mean, that resolution was passed several months ago. I think, I think it's, you know, there's been enough time now for the province to say, okay, here's, here's the check, here's the financial commitment for the six police officers on an annual basis. And today, I don't know, and I'll apologize if I'm wrong, but I haven't got anything in writing. I don't know if the rest of the council has. I haven't gotten anything in writing. I don't see any financial commitment, and, and to my mind, a permit should not have been issued unless the six police officers are bought and paid for by the provincial government, so we have six new police officers for the City of Charlestown.
Deputy.
So there was snippets of that in the report where we had asked for an update on, on the Community Outreach Center. As for whether or not the six police officers have been hired yet, it is my understanding that an agreement has been signed. Whether or not Chief McConnell has completed the hiring process is, is not something I would be aware of. Perhaps Protective Services would have that answer, or if one of our managers or directors had an update on that, but that's, that's as much as I know of that right now, Counsel Twill, but I, as far as I understand, there was an agreement signed with the province for those six officers, but I, I don't have a copy of it, and I've not seen a copy of it, so I can ask His Worship, CAO Mohammed, one of our directors, if they have any, an additional update on that.
Yeah, no, the, the update is that it falls under Protective and Emergency Services. I know that the chief is doing interviews, if I'm incorrect about that. Deputy Chief Sean Coombs is here. Sean, if you can answer that. I know that, that I did speak to, again, this is not in the report. This is where we go sideways, and, no, no, and we're, no, no, we're going to just get a, Deputy Chief, no, he's going to, no, listen. Yeah.
Your Worship, council, to answer that question, I can say for sure that we have not gone to competition through HR for those positions as of yet. Where it is with the funding, that would be handled by Chief McConnell.
And can you get, no, can you get that information, forward that on to council, please? Could you get the chief to forward that information? What's the status on that funding?
Your Worship, yes, I can do that.
Okay. Okay, we can move on. No, Counsel Twill, we can move on it, because we have, no, yeah. Is the question on the report?
It's on the issue. I just...
No, we've, no, Counsel Twill, we got a, Counsel Twill, we just got a report from the deputy chief that the chief of police will...
Why does it take them so long?
Well, HR is out there trying...
Why does it take them so long for the written agreement?
We'll get it. We'll get it. We'll get it. You get some resolutions? Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counsel McCabe. Be it resolved that council approved the request for major variance for 14 Oak Drive, PID 390401, and 27 McMillan Crescent, PID 778241, to facilitate the creation of a road access and a new lot for the purpose of constructing a single detached dwelling, as well as adjust the boundaries of existing, of an existing lot containing an existing single detached dwelling, and that the major variance would permit and recognize a reduced minimum required lot frontage of 10.06 meters, 33 feet, for the purpose of for the proposed new lots.
Deputy, do you want to speak to it first?
Thank you, Your Worship. A similar resolution was upon us last month. This is slightly different. The developer and the applicant heard the concerns of the residents and of council, and have come back with an updated application, which would give the access off of McMillan instead of off of Oak, and you'll notice the letters of support and a few letters of concern in your package. One of the concerns was that they, they were concerned that the address was still on Oak. I can tell you that if council supports this resolution, then the new address would be on McMillan, and the egress and the access off of Oak is there only for emergencies when it comes to dealing with the water mains that are there, or if, God forbid, we had an issue like Hammond's Plains and you needed a second exit out for a fire, but other than that, the exit and entrance for that new driveway would be off of McMillan. If there's any other questions, there's a pretty detailed report in there. Staff and the planning board are recommending we support this application, but again, if you have any other questions on this resolution, I'll do my best to answer, as well, we have our manager of planning development with us this evening. Thank you.
Counsel Twill.
I'm glad that there's, there's going to be a compromise here. I'm glad that the applicant has gone back to the, you know, back to the drawing board, I guess, so to speak, and now the entrance is going to be on McMillan, and of course, with the permit, there's, there's a drainage plan that'll be completed, so that there won't be any runoff in the adjacent property owners, and I think this is, I believe this is a good compromise. I wish the neighborhood the very best of luck and hope things work out really well.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven zero. And just for the public's information, Counselor Beck is not here because of his, the death of his brother. Counsel Ramsey is a friend of the family, and I believe Counselor Bernard is out west, is traveling. Okay, do we have another resolution?
Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counsel McCabe. Be it resolved that the request for a site-specific exemption to the zoning and development bylaw to allow for signs that project a business name, image, or advertisement onto a building or any other surface from a source external to the sign, and to allow for animated and video signs for the property municipally addressed as 145 Richmond Street, PID 340422, located in the Park Cultural Zone, be approved to proceed to public consultation.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, seven zero. Okay, next one, please.
Thank you, Worship. I believe Counselor McKinnon excused himself from this one. It's the Community Fridge.
I think we have, what are your considerations for that? Uh, maybe not.
No, no, number three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counsel McCabe. Be it resolved that the request for a site-specific exemption to the zoning and development bylaw to allow for a Community Fridge as an accessory use on the subject property, PID 358218, at or near 14 Connolly Street in the parking zone, be approved to proceed to public consultation.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Just a little bit of background on this, folks. The applicant actually applied for a permit three years ago through our previous manager of planning and heritage, and they were given confirmation that a permit wasn't required, so they went on with their, with their business, and through their, through the complaint process, it was just since February, discovered that in fact there was an error in the previous manager's approval. So we're here today to go through the process for the folks that are running this community-based organization, to bring them up to conformity. So, so that's why they're here, asking for a site-specific amendment, because they're located in a parking lot, and that's not a permitted use. So the, so, you know, it's, it's one of those situations that they've been operating for three years with, with, with permission, but only discovered there was an error in the permission. So we are heading, we're asking council to continue with the process where we move on to public consultation, but when it returns to council, I will be recommending and asking council to waive the fees for this community organization, and I'll also be putting a notice of motion in to create a report and, and a recommendation around reducing and waiving permit fees that address food insecurities, the unhoused, and our marginalized populations. So if there's any questions on this resolution, I'll do my best to answer, and as for my notice of motion, that's going to our next Planning and Heritage Committee meeting, and anyone's more than welcome to attend. Thank you.
Counsel Twill.
Could you provide me with a copy of the authorization that the previous manager of planning written, is written authorization? I'd like to read a copy of that, and since the property is not owned by the organizers, the Community Fridge is owned by the Parkdale Sherwood Lines Club, I think it'd be prudent if they were here in attendance as well, because it is their property. And thirdly, I think we need to make sure that all of the information regarding what has taken place as a result of the Community Fridge being at dislocation and the impact and effect that it's had in the neighborhood. So we want to make sure that, you know, we have all the information and services of kind that the City of Charlestown has provided over the last three years as well. When I say that, I mean Public Works being asked by our bylaw enforcement officer to clean and clean the property on a number of occasions. So I don't think anyone's against a Community Fridge. I think what they're, what they're posed to is what is drawn into the neighborhood. Some people simply don't respect the neighbors, and neighbors have had a very, very difficult time. You want to draw the analogy, case in point, Outreach Center up in Use Street. So I better make sure that we have all the eyes out and... So I better make sure that we have all the i's dotted and all the t's crossed as we embark upon this process. But I'll reiterate, I'd like to get a copy of that report and the authorization, and the signing of a permit to the organizers of the, of the, you know, community fridge. I'd like to have all that information. That wasn't in the package, but since you brought it up, I look forward to reading, reading that information. Thank you.
Deputy.
Sure. And there, you will not get a copy of a signed permit, because they were told they didn't need a permit. But what you will get is the correspondence between the previous manager and the confirmation that no permit was required, and they could continue on, they could continue on with their project. But I can, I know that our manager has all that documentation, and he can share that with all of counsel.
Send it by email.
Yep. But just to reiterate, they were, they were told three years ago by the, by the manager of planning and heritage that a permit was not required for them to have, operate a community fridge on the parking lot that belongs to the.
Sherwood Parkdale Lions Club, that is also supporting the application. They've already, my brother sits on the Sherwood Parkdale Lions Club. Counsel Twill, second question.
So if I understand it correctly, they didn't need a permit because they met the zoning? There was compliance with the zoning and development bylaw? Is that what the previous manager, Mr. Alex Forbes, stated in his response to the request? Well, he was the manager of planning. It's no secret.
No, 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 just, just finish something.
Yeah, it's no secret. So, so I just, just want to make sure I understand the process. I'm trying to follow the process. So that you stated here tonight, previous manager, which was Mr. Forbes, indicated that, no, you can go ahead, you don't need a permit, and you're good to go, light's green. You can set up shop, and the residents that were affected by the community fridge didn't have to be consulted.
Your light's red, go ahead.
Yep. And just, just to follow up on, on your, your questions, again, the manager of planning development will forward along and add that to the completed package, all the documentation from where the community fridge group were granted permission, and the lengthy emails that went back and forth. And again, they were told there was no permit required. Counsel was not involved in that process, and so this is all new to all of us, but the information is there, and I will be sure to make sure it's in the complete package. You know, if we, if we are, if we are proceeding with public consultation, and then back to planning staff, that'll give them the opportunity to add all of this information into the package. If you prefer that in prior to that, I can have it sent to you prior to the conference.
And it'll go to all counsel.
And all of counsel, of course. Thank you.
Okay. Question? Okay, all those in favor of going to a public consultation for the community fridge on, at, near 14 Connolly Street, please raise your hand. Six zero. Okay. Call Counselor McKinnon back in. And the next one is Heritage. Sorry. Reconsideration.
Moved by Deputy Mary Ankauf, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that counsel deny the reconsideration request concerning the March 26, 2024 approval of the official plan amendment and site-specific zoning exemption for the subject property identified as 199 Grafton Street, 156 Prince Street, PID 342790, as it has not been found that the request, based on its date of submission to the city as of April 30, 2024, met the related timing requirements as prescribed by Section 3.15.2 of the zoning and development bylaw for reconsideration requests that concerns a decision of counsel.
Counsel Twill.
Late this afternoon, all members of counsel received email chain from the people behind the request for the reconsideration. My question is, and I'm supporting the development, I just want to make sure, I'm trying to understand that email exchange. Terms of the reconsideration, where all the procedures and process followed completely so that if this goes to Iraq, the city will be in good legal standing and not have to worry about any deficiencies or any discrepancies in the process.
Deputy.
Yep, thank you, worship. Well, first, it can't go to Iraq because the time has lapsed, and so instead of going through an Iraq, they decided to go through a reconsideration. They didn't meet the deadline for the reconsideration either. It was thoroughly vetted through our manager of planning development, whose recommendation was that it did not meet the threshold or the, or the timeframe. So we're here tonight with the staff's recommendation, as well as the planning board's recommendation, that we do not reconsider this development at 199 Grafton Street. And if you have any other questions on the reconsideration, our manager of planning development is here, and you're more than welcome to read for a question to him.
Defer to him.
Thank you.
Counsel Twill.
So in terms of the timeframes, reconsideration, so do they, do they have to file a reconsideration after first reading? Or are they within their legal right, and they can, they can file it after the second reading? So I think that was one of the items that was pointed out in the email exchange, and I'm just looking for, I guess, a clarification. So, so I can understand, and I just want to make sure that whatever we do here, we're doing it right.
Can we defer to David? He's ready to answer. And David, could you note, note this section in the zoning and development bylaw? It's not the first time we've had a reconsideration, Counsel Twill. I think it's 21 days.
First reading or second?
No, just, he's going to enlighten us.
Through, through your worship, to address your question, Counselor Twill, the wording of the bylaw under Section 3.15 is 21, that the reconsideration request has to be filed within 21 calendar days of the initial decision of counsel. And the initial decision would have occurred on March 26, when first reading was given and the vote was taken to approve the amendments.
So it doesn't have to be after. Second reading does qualify in terms of the time.
No, just, just go back to the 21 days is from where, when it was initialized, right?
From the initial decision, which would have been, in this case, first reading on March 26. This request for reconsideration was received on April 30, which was well past the 21 calendar day time limit for the initial decision of counsel.
David? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Do we have another resolution there?
Moved by Deputy Mary Ankauf, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to amend the development concept plan and development agreement to develop a proposed community health center on the subject property identified on 115 Murchison Lane, PID 425892, be approved to proceed to public consultation.
Okay. So this is another redesign? For the mental health and acute, yes, do you want to answer?
So every time there's a change to a concept plan, it needs to go through the process again. So they have made more changes, so therefore we have to follow the process, and that is through planning staff, planning board, public consultation, back to planning staff, back to planning board, and back to counsel. So that's, that's the process. So that's where we're heading if counsel approves to go to public consultation. But again, when a concept, when a development concept plan makes any changes, that's the process. We've been here before with this project, we've been here with other projects the same way. So, thank you.
Questions called. All those in favor going to public consultation on 115 Murchison Lane, which is the new mental health and acute care campus. Seven zero. Okay. Is that it? You get some reads. Thank you. Two reads.
To adopt bylaw PH-ZD.2-080, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to amend Appendix G zoning map of the Charlestown zoning and development bylaw from low-density residential single zone, um, lost my pace on the page, sorry, medium-density mixed residential zone and institutional zone to comprehensive development area zone for the subject properties identified as PIDs 192252 and 422642 to permit the future development of a master plan community on the subject properties. That would include a total range of 1,211 to 1,476 dwelling units, including a mix of single detached duplex townhome and multi-unit residential dwellings. Bylaw PH-ZD.2-080, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, would also amend Appendix B, comprehensive development area, and Appendix I, bylaw revision history of the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, PH-ZD.2-080, as it pertains to the properties identified as PIDs 192252 and 422642, as attached, was read and approved the first time on April 9, 2024. Be it resolved that said bylaw be read a second time and approved. Moved by Deputy Mary Ankauf, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Second reading, shall I carry? Carry? Good. Want to read it again?
Okay. Be it resolved that said bylaw be adopted. Moved by Deputy Mary Ankauf, seconded by Counselor McCabe. To adopt bylaw PH-ZD.2-081, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend Appendix G zoning map of the Charlestown zoning and development bylaw from institutional zone to comprehensive development area zone for the subject property identified as PID 374140, to permit the future development of an eight-story, stepping back to six-story, 257-unit residential apartment building. Bylaw PH-ZD.2-081, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, would also amend Appendix B, comprehensive development area, and Appendix I, bylaw revision history of the Charlestown zoning and development bylaw. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, PH-ZD.2-081, as it pertains to the property identified as 503 University Avenue, PID 374140, as attached, was read and approved a first time on April 9, 2024. Be it resolved that said bylaw be read a second time and approved. Moved by Deputy Mary Ankauf, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Second reading for 199 Grafton Street. Shall it carry?
No.
Oh. 503, sorry, that's the gray group. Okay. Shall it pass? Okay.
Okay. Be it resolved that said bylaw be adopted. Moved by Deputy Mary Ankauf, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Thank you. Just one second. So we got a next report. I think that's the it for her report. Human Resources. Counsel Matar.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening, counsel. The Human Resources Committee met on April 9, 2024, and May 7, 2024. The minutes of these meetings are included in your package. There are three resolutions in front of you this evening, and a second reading of the remuneration bylaw for counsel's consideration. If there's any questions regarding the resolutions or the second reading, I'll do my best to answer those, and if there's any questions on the report as well, we have our manager here to address those. Thank you.
Do we have some resolutions? I think it's three.
Moved by Counselor Matar, and seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the City of Charlestown accepts the highest scoring proposal from MNP in the amount of $64,500, excluding taxes and related expenses, to develop and complete the CAO annual review per RFP file number 2024-19, and the total project cost in the amount of $64,500, excluding taxes and related expenses, be funded from the 2024-2025 operating budget, and further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against? Six one. Counsel Duran, opposed. Just one second. Okay, do you have another resolution?
Moved by Counselor Matar, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved, whereas the province has discontinued the VACs pass requirement, isolation requirements, and has adjusted to living with COVID-19 more sustainably, therefore be it resolved that counsel repeal the attached mandatory COVID-19 vaccination or testing policy, policy number P-HR-17.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, seven zero. It's a lot of writing when people are missing. Okay, go ahead.
Moved by Counselor Matar, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that counsel repeal the attached 2023 employee volunteerism policy, as the 2023 Canada Games have been completed.
Questions called. All those in favor. Another seven zero. Okay, go ahead.
Amend the City of Charlestown remuneration bylaw, number 2021-RMN-01, to correct errors previously approved relating to counsel's remuneration, and proceed with a 2% per year salary increase. It was first read on April 23, 2024. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Charlestown remuneration bylaw, number 2021-RMN-01, be read a second time, and that said bylaw now be approved and adopted. Moved by Counselor Matar, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Shall I carry? Okay, I have to raise your hands. Okay, contrary? Six one. Six one. Okay, that's it? Okay. Next report is Protective and Emergency Services, and deputy, you're going to present it. Thank you. Just one sec.
In the absence of Chair Ramsey and Counselor Beck, I will let you know that the Protective and Emergency Services Committee, we met on April 3 and April 30. The minutes in your package, we have no resolutions for your consideration, and I'll do my best to answer. We do have Deputy Chief Coombs here with us this evening, and we also have our Deputy Fire Chief. So if there's any questions for myself, I'll do my best, and if not, we can throw over to our managers. So, thank you very much.
Counsel Matar.
Thank you. Just wanted to reference, there was a discussion brought up by Counselor Beck regarding the Charlestown Police Services Park Street staff doing door-to-door campaign, looking to see if that, those numbers, and were discussed at the, at the next committee. to see if that, those numbers were discussed at the next committee meeting that occurred. Would you know if that happened? Because I think it was from the first one. It has not happened?
I haven't seen the agenda for next week, but I'm not sure if it's on the agenda for next week's committee meeting or not. But I can certainly take that back under advisement and bring that up to Counselor Ramsey to ensure that we do get that information.
Yes, thank you. Because I did, you know, request here at one of our last meetings to continue that door-to-door campaign and to expand that pass Park Street and B Street to other areas in the vicinity that are affected as well. So I would like to see that campaign continue and if this is the way in which that discussion can happen, I would appreciate if you'd have that added to it. Thank you.
Counselor Twill.
Just along the lines of what Counselor Matar talked about regarding the, you know, the agreement to, by council, to support the relocation of the Outreach Center down to Park Street. Again, one of the commitments made by the province is that there would be a task force, task force consisting of representatives from, you know, Shelter, the Outreach Center, the Charlottetown Police Department, City of Charlottetown, I'm not sure who in the City of Charlottetown is participating on the task force, but I would think that be advantageous for council so we can be informed on a consistent continual basis that we receive a copy of those minutes from that report. I know that there was, there was a working group when the Outreach Center was up in Eustace Street, but I don't know who was on that committee, never ever got a report, not a clue what was happening in terms of, you know, who was collaborating, who was communicating, who was doing what, when, where, and why. So, in the spirit of collaboration, openness, transparency, and accountability, I think that all members of city council should have a copy of the minutes as to, A, who's attending those meetings, who's representing the province, who's representing the city? You know, what are the issues that their residents are experiencing? And we need to have that information, again, on a consistent continual basis so that we're well-informed as to what's taking place.
Deputy.
Thank you, and great, great question, Counselor Twill. And because this falls under Protective Services as well as the Planning and Heritage that I chair, I do have a little bit of information on that and that is that His Worship has been asking every month at Planning and Heritage for an update because these, these fell under the development agreement when we approved the move to the Outreach Center to Park Street. And to date, there has been no communication with the city around this task force, so we have requested an update, so we don't have one yet, so we will add that request to not only the request to get an update on when this might start, but also when we get the, when we get that information, not only to share that with council, but if there is ever a task force formed to ensure the council has all the information, who's on it, when they meet, the minutes, et cetera. But at right now, there's, we had nothing, no information. And Counselor, Your Worship, you may be able to add to that.
I'm just going to get, she's been at the meetings, just have a seat there. CAO, did we get an email from the Deputy Minister for Housing, Municipal Affairs on terms of references for that task force?
Thank you, Worship. So the terms of reference are currently being drafted by the province and being shared for feedback. It's still very early days because they're trying to decide who should be on this committee still and then also who this committee is accountable to, who the task force is accountable to, so those mechanics are still being worked on. But once we have something, a full draft, it can come through to council for sure.
Right, and we've had two meetings with the province, the CAO, myself, Michael Rus went to the last committee, the Deputy Mayor, and I believe Norman Beck when we met, this Yeah, but you were at the first meeting, I think, were you not? Yeah, so there were two meetings and there should be minutes from those, from those meetings that will be available to all of council. But that is only as part of organizing and getting the joint task force committee in place. Counselor Twill.
Well, I think the Deputy Mayor was a little more candid with the response. So to date, there is, there hasn't been any meetings. I'm given to understand there has been preliminary meetings, now whether it held internally, but, you know, you hear bits and pieces, so I'm wondering why, once again, when the resolution is passed, police officers are going door-to-door, why that information is not forthcoming to city council. Now, the mayor talked about a couple of meetings held with the province. He said, you know, we can have a copy of the minutes. Well, meetings have been taking place over the last two or three years, we've never gotten any minutes, any meetings taken with the province regarding the Outreach Center and things that are, issues that are taking place. We've never received any copies of any minutes when elected officials are meeting with the province. So I'll go on the request that I'd like to have, from a historical perspective, I'd like to have all that information as well. So having said that, again, we need to know who's going to be representing the city. We were told from the outset, no elected officials are going to be sitting on this committee. This is strictly going to be, you know, civil servants, sorry.
Stakeholders and members of the community, yeah.
Yeah, stakeholders, but, but the people that represent the community are forbidden to sit on the community or sit on the, on the task force. And when this first come out, I questioned that because it was no different than what took place up in Eustace Street. There was a working group, there was people sitting around the table, we never received any information whatsoever. So we had no idea, considering that we're responsible to the neighborhoods and communities, we never got any information. So I guess we're going to be curving out a new frontier when it comes to information provided to all members of city council. So not sure why that process didn't begin when the resolution was passed. This speaks to a similar example of, of the police officers looking forward to the financial commitment on an annual basis written and committed to by the province of Prince Edward Island. So soon as we get that information, all members of council are going to be that much more informed.
Okay. Well, I know when it was 241 Eustace Street, I was only at one meeting at the beginning and you were at that meeting too, when, when all the stakeholders got together on the second floor of the Curran Club, two years, two.
That was three years ago.
That was the only meeting I ever went to in 241 Eustace.
That, that, no, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, yep. We're going to move on. No, no, I'm. Yep. Yep, we're just moving on. I know, we're moving on, we're just moving on. Let's, your report's coming up.
So, so the meeting you're talking, three years ago, you can recall, I had a list of concerns on behalf of the constituency and the Deputy Minister caught me up and everyone said, no, no, we're not here to hear that.
Yep. Well, that's the only meeting I attended.
That wasn't an information exchange.
Yeah, that was.
The man who told us, here's what's coming at you, take it or leave it.
Yeah, that's the only meeting I attended in 241. Okay, Parks and Recreation. Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. The report is in your package. We'll be presenting one resolution to city council for council's consideration. Your committee met yesterday and I'll do my best to answer any questions. We have Christopher Drummond here, the Assistant Manager of Parks and Recreation. Chris is here as well to, to help answer any questions. Thank you, Chris.
Deputy, do you have a question? Okay, just one second.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Twill, for your report. I tuned into your meeting yesterday and, and saw the report in the package as well around the diverse city multicultural festivals request to move from the Queen Street to the Confederation Landing and I'm just a bit perplexed that it was for information purposes only because we were, we were here just a mere two weeks ago. Council was asked to support the move from Queen Street to the Confederation Landing for DCI, so I'm just wondering, is there a criteria that they, this one didn't have to come to council? Is, is this all part of that resolution where we're, where we are identifying some new policies and procedures? And so just if you can provide any information of why, why one festival goes to Confederation Landing without council's approval, but another one needs council's approval?
Counselor Twill.
Thank you very much.
Your question, that's a good question. I asked that question yesterday at the meeting and I was informed by senior management that the reason why it was on the agenda was for information purposes only. That request was made by representatives, the organizers for diverse city, which were able to have their event on Queen Street but chose to relocate to Confederation Landing. So that was their decision. They wanted, they wanted to relocate, they were more than, more than able to have, host the event at Queen Street, but they decided to relocate to Confederation Landing and our assistant manager, I asked the question, our assistant manager said, this is just here for information purposes. Now, in terms of the broader issue, what is operational and what isn't, I'll be candid with you, that's a mystery to me, still is. You know, not trying to be critical, but we were brought in again to vote to relocate the farmer's market off of Queen Street down to Confederation Landing when, I can only speak for myself, we were not involved in the process. So I don't know, Mr. Drummond, if there's anything you'd like to add to that, but again, it was brought there, Laura Lee did attend the meeting, and again, the way it was presented to the committee is, it was there for information purposes.
Your Worship through to Counselor Twill and to Deputy Mary Yankoff. So as Counselor Twill mentioned with regards to the farmer's market and that coming to the committee and through council and the whole process, I think that process was because of how the procedure at first was followed and, and council felt like they needed to have a decision or make a call on where that event was going to go and what, as Counselor Twill also said, with regards to what is operational and what is political. And we have brought to our committee before that are for information purposes in the past as well, and if the committee has an issue, we would address it there and then if we felt like it may be more controversial, we could bring it to council for a decision. This event also has taken place in the past at Confederation Landing in 2020 or during COVID. It was a smaller scale event, but it did happen at Confederation Landing. So we based our decision that we were comfortable with the event moving to Confederation Landing for this year. I don't believe a decision has been made if it's going to be a permanent relocate, but it was a relocation that the diverse city group had asked to make for this coming year.
And to be clear, the request came from diverse city, correct?
That is correct.
Counselor, deputy?
Just my second question on that, thank you. And then I guess it's good that we passed our, council passed a resolution two weeks ago that will tighten up these policies and procedures to ensure that we, we have a clear, concise path forward, going forward for any of these types of events, so these continued confusing questions don't have to present themselves on the, on the council floor. So thank you for the clarity on that and I say I look forward to tightening up the procedures. Thank you.
Counselor Twill.
No, it's a very good question, very good question. Like I said, I think Mr. Drummond explained it way differently. And, you know, in reference to the farmer's market, as you can recall, we, two resolutions were passed by council. I moved the resolution requesting our city engineers, two from Public Works and Mr. Johnson Asset Management, three very capable engineers along with our fire chief and our police chief to come up with a comprehensive report on, on Queen Street to see what it would take, what are the amenities, what are the, what's the infrastructure requirements to make Queen Street a viable option in terms of safety and security? So I think council is being very proactive in that regard and I certainly look forward to the conclusion of that report. As we all know, we have streets all over North America, all over North America where we have farmer's markets and different types of events and I see the capital city of this province being able to host these events and people certainly felt comfortable on Queen Street, brought to our attention that, that there are issues, there are concerns, and I look forward to our professional management team coming back with, with a report saying here are the prerequisites.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McLeer.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Just to, to the Chair Counselor Twill, just on the, on the report, the Simmons Commissioning Services, I'm assuming with that, with the new Simmons.
That's a resolution that's coming up. You can speak to it on the resolution.
Oh, okay.
Resolution? Okay, go ahead.
I, I wanted to bring the council's attention as well. I've been getting concerns from residents regarding the, you know, the number of trees that are down in Victoria Park, branches, debris, there have been a couple of campfires set up there and there's concern amongst our community about, you know, a fire unnecessarily starting in Victoria Park and wiping it out completely. So I'm going to request our, our senior management, Parks and Recreation, to set up a meeting with, with the fire department, police department. We, we need to be proactive. I know I've raised this concern before, but there's many more concerns now in the community about the safety of Victoria Park, particularly the wooded area. There's a lot of stumps, there's a lot of trees that are down and I know we have the folks that are saying this is natural preservation, but there's also this safety as well. So we need to, we need to examine that, examine that thoroughly and be able to report to the community as to what the status is with all the trees that are fallen, particularly after Fiona. There were a number of trees that were down prior to Fiona, but now with Fiona down, there's even more of a concern and all you have to do is look out west and look at all the forest fires that are taking place. We don't want that to happen in Victoria Park or any of our wooded areas in the city of Charlottetown. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do you want to read the resolution? Do we have one?
Moved by Counselor Twill, seconded by Counselor Matar. Be it resolved that as per the recently advertised request for proposals, Simmons Sports Center Commissioning Services, the city of Charlottetown accepts the bid of $48,000 plus applicable taxes from MCA Consultants Incorporated and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counselor McLeer.
Yeah, just, just on this resolution, I'm assuming that with the new facility opening up and the scale, that Commissioning Services are part of the, I guess, the security and, and what have you going forward with that, with this new facility? And would I be right in assuming that, that any time, I guess, that building's open, there would be Commissionerial Services? Is that the, is that the goal or is that the objective of this?
Again, very good question. Thank you for the question. And, and some of us were confused around the council table because we're not involved in the industry, but this is, this is normal procedure that you bring in an outside firm that has an independent lens that will come in and examine the facility, all facets of the facility, all areas of the facility, the infrastructure, the amenities, to make sure that, you know, the taxpayers are getting what they paid for. And that's truly an independent report. We look forward to the findings of that report. We're all optimistic that, you know, the people that we have on the ground, our consultants that are there on a daily basis are doing a good job. I know our staff are quite comfortable with that, with, with what's been taking place since the construction first began and again, this is part of the process. And I believe Counselor McLeer that this, this exercise is completed once the facility opens.
Yeah. Counselor Twill, we have three engineers here. We have Christopher here. I think we had this discussion, it's a good question. Albert, Richard, or Paul, can you just sum up what Commissioning Services are?
I think Chris, I think Chris can.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, Counsel McLeire is going to give a rundown. Here he is. He's going to do that.
So, to the worship, through to your worship, to Counsel McLeire. So, the commissioning services, it's not commissioners that would facilitate or be in the facility. It would be for the, to make sure that all systems are well-designed, completed, and functioning properly upon occupancy, and that the staff have the adequate systems, documentation, and training. So they come in and make sure basically that your sinks are running, that your heat systems are all working, and they work with the project managers that are on site now, create a report, a checklist, and they make sure that we have everything we need at the end, when we're ready to open the doors and allow our users to come in. And that's from a non-engineer. So that's my interpretation.
Well, we get three of them out there. Question? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven zero. Okay. Okay. Next report, water and wastewater utility, Counsel Duran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The Water and Sewer Utility Committee had a regular meeting on April the 11th and May the 9th. We have four resolutions for your consideration tonight. The package, the minutes from our meetings are in your package. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them as best I can. Thank you.
Do you want to go to the first one?
Moved by Counselor Duran, seconded by Counselor Matar. Be it resolved that the city of Charlottetown proceeds with the approval of a change order for digester maintenance, and accepts the change order submitted by GFL Environmental in the amount of $496,108.71 plus applicable taxes, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All those in favor. Okay, seven zero. Want to go to the next one?
Moved by Counselor Duran, seconded by Counselor Matar. Be it resolved that the city of Charlottetown proceeds with the award of hourly backhoe hire rates, and accepts the bid submitted by Lee McDonald Construction in the amount of $81.80 per hour plus applicable taxes, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All those, go ahead, Counsel McLeire.
Just on the, on the quotes, there was, excuse me, four quotes. Recommendation is Lee McDonald, and the hourly rate's 81.80, and then U C C Utility was 72.50. Just, just on that metric, was there a reason that, at 81.80, that McDonald contract was awarded?
Counsel Duran?
Yep, thank you for that. Yes, this was the only, this was the lowest bid with, that fulfilled the contract. A lower bid did not fulfill the contract, because the, the backhoe needs a tamper as well. And the lower bid didn't have a tamper. That's included in your package there, the explanation. But thank you.
Okay. Question? Questions called. All in favor? Okay, seven zero. Yes?
Moved by Counselor Duran, seconded by Counselor Matar. Be it resolved that the city of Charlottetown proceeds with the award of grass cutting utility, and accepts the bid submitted by DNS Grass Cutting in the amount of $12,744 plus applicable taxes, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel McCabe?
Probably not the best time to ask this question, but it is about this. We're hiring a grass company, grass cutting company. Why don't we hire some students and hire Public Works to cut our own grass?
Counsel Duran?
This is a public tender. It went out to tender for this, and this is by far the lowest bid that came in. We have worked with this contractor in the past. They have the equipment, the knowledge. It's not just one place, it's a number of places around the city and outlying areas, the wellfields and things like that. So, you know, this is a very good bid for that type of service.
No, no, go right ahead. Second question?
I'm sure, I'm sure it is. I guess probably what I'd ask is maybe it would be good to take back and look at ways that we could collaborate within our own organization. You know, it'd be great to be able to hire some young people to work for Public Works who have grass cutters that go out and cut different areas, that we might be able to collaborate and do that. I don't know if that's something we could look at, but it would certainly make better sense to me. And we wouldn't have to go to tender necessarily if we're working within our own organization, would we? C A O, Eleanor?
I think you should ask the chair. You have to go through the chair. Counsel Duran?
Yep, thank you. That, of course, is an idea. This, this tender is a number of properties within the city and outlying areas, its other wellfields. You know, to hire someone or students, you have to get them there with a truck, you have to get the equipment to go out there and do it, and then pay an hourly wage. This company, they're well-versed in trucks and trailers and staff. And, you know, this is over, I think, 18 cuts. So it's, you know, it's fairly inexpensive. But if, if someone was to show that we could hire students and hire a driver and maintain the equipment, you know, I think we probably looked at this before, and this is the best feasible way of doing it. But we're, you know, we're open. If Public Works wants to, you know, come, come to us and maybe say, okay, you know, we can do it cheaper, you know, let's, that'd be an open idea for us. Thank you.
Always open for options. Oh, yeah. Question? All those in favor? Seven zero. Yes, please. Sorry about that.
Moved by Counselor Duran, seconded by Counselor Matar. Be it resolved that the city of Charlottetown proceeds with the procurement of replacement UV lamps for the Charlottetown Pollution Control Plant, and accepts the quote submitted by Atlantic Purification Systems Limited in the amount of $53,072.71 plus applicable taxes, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? Oh, go right ahead there, Counsel Twill. Counsel Twill?
Thank you. As you know, I've always asked questions about our partnership with the town of Stratford. Is the town of Stratford contributing financially to this, to this expenditure, expenditure to enhance and do a replacement at the treatment plant?
Counsel Duran?
Thank you very much, Counsel Twill. This in particular, this, this a UV ultralight, ultraviolet lights, it's the last, the last step in putting sewage into the, into the river. So, it's treated, and then it goes through this ultraviolet stage. So it's, there's no, there's no contaminants or anything in it. The town of Stratford contributes to their flow coming into the treatment plant. So everything that's coming this way is, is has a fee on it. So I guess in your question, are they paying directly for this? They're based on their flow. So, you know, they don't come up and pay for each part, but they do pay for their flow and all the water coming this way.
Follow-up, Counsel Twill? Yeah, okay, okay. Just press your button. Yes?
Thank you, Counsel Duran. So, I'm trying to understand what you're saying. So it's just the agreement is strictly on the flow. It has nothing to do with any of the amenities or infrastructure. I think they're down for, what, 15%? I was always suspect of that agreement. I thought it was a pretty, pretty darn good agreement. Half the residents of Stratford said, we're, you know, we're, we're paying the freight, majority of the freight. So, again, when it comes to any type of capital improvements, I understand the town of Stratford does not make a financial contribution in any which way, shape, or form.
Counsel Duran?
As, as I've stated before, you know, this, this agreement was, was implemented by the government of the day. They told us that we were to accept this, you know, the, the fee for the flow. And both communities agreed. We voted on it. We accepted it.
Yeah.
You know, and so we make money on their flow coming into our, our system. Now, we, we have capital upgrades, you know, we, we have the expenditures for that, we budgeted for that, you know. So your, your question, are they paying anything for capital, you know, we, we make money on the flow. So that, any profit is put towards capital for it. So, you know, unless I'm mistaken, and the manager can, can clear it up with, with his expertise, I'll just ask him if he, if he wants to jump in or...
Counsel Duran, so if I was paying $100, they pay $115, right?
Or more.
Or more.
I think it's more than 15%. Am I, am I correct, Richard?
Go ahead, Richard.
Thank you, your worship. So the town of Stratford pays their fair share of our operating costs and capital costs at the pollution control plant. And it is based on the flow that is treated at the wastewater treatment plants. We look at the total flow that comes into the plant, which is coming from Stratford and Charlottetown. And whatever portion of that flow is coming from Stratford, that's how much of our annual costs and our capital carrying costs that Stratford pays for, plus 15% for past infrastructure improvements and an administration cost. So whatever their proportion is, that's what they pay, plus a 15% fee on top of that.
Yeah. They're a cost plus to customer. Yeah. They're a premium customer.
Thank you for that, Richard. Certainly, certainly helps me with my explanation.
And it cleans up, it cleaned up the river too, because it shut down that secondary or that lagoon system. It'd be great if we can get Cornwall on board too. Okay. We have a, question was called. All those in favor? Yeah, okay, seven zero. Okay, carried. Sure.
Thank you, once again, for your report. Thank you, Richard, for being here. I make a request. I'm always curious as to how much water the cruise ship industry uses. You know, we have record numbers of cruise ships that come into the Charlottetown Harbor. And I don't expect an answer tonight, but I'm just wondering on average, or on an annual basis, how much water the cruise ship industry uses, uses of city of Charlottetown water. Be nice to have that information. I, you know, I've had discussions over the years with residents, and, you know, the topic comes up from time to time. And again, you know, it'd be nice to be able to inform the residents as to exactly how much water cruise ship industry uses on an annual basis. Thank you.
Counsel Duran, can you add that to the agenda for the next meeting? I know it's been asked before.
Thank you very much. We could put it on for our next meeting, if that's, that's possible, if you have an idea.
Okay, Public Works. Thank you, Counsel Duran. Counsel McCabe?
Your worship, our Public Works Committee met on April 11th. Again, on April 24th. The draft minute for those meetings are in your package. The Civic Board for Persons with Disabilities met on April 16th. Those minutes are also in your package. Also, you will see the capital projects updated spreadsheet in your package. We're going to try to update the progress of those capital projects each month. And there will not be five resolutions, but four resolutions for consideration tonight. If there's any questions, I'll do my best answer.
Counsel Duran?
Thank you very much, Counsel McCabe. I've been asked by, it seems that when the paving companies or the paving comes out, a lot of residents ask, how come my street's not done? When is it going to be done? I, I did contact the manager. He gave me some, some numbers there, when. They're certainly not happy with, you know, the, the order of the streets. Some of them say they've been there 25 years or, or more, and they don't get any pavement. I know last year, they, they patched a few potholes on certain streets, which were great. But they, they've asked me to ask for at least a reconsideration. I mean, we have two or three streets in, in my ward that certainly would warrant a reconsideration. I know a couple of years ago, we did half of the street I live on, Cedar Avenue, but the lower half seemed to be really hit hard with a lot of water and salt and ice this year. It was like a bad path. So a number of the residents have asked me, listen, could you, could you have this looked at? Sure. And then I no sooner hang the phone up and I get a call from Fulton Drive. And they're the ones that, well, we haven't been paved. I said, look, I'll, I'll go to the meeting. It's in the report. I'll ask the questions. You know, could, could we have a reconsideration? Could we have someone come out that, that values the, the streets and does a, does a yearly assessment of them? Could they come back and look at that? You know, that's, that's one of my questions for that. Because, you know, when they asked me that, on December 23rd, I've, I've mentioned this before, that surveyors came on our street and put in pink stakes all the way up and down the street. They put in property markers in the middle of two pathways in our park. And these, you know, people are starting to cut their grass now, and all these pink stakes are up and down the street. And they keep asking me, well, what are, what are you going to do? Are you going to put a sidewalk in? What side? We're not sure. The capital budget here, we, we made some cuts, and we're not quite sure where we're going to go with the sidewalk. I know a number of people on the street have asked, please, can we just go with paving instead of a sidewalk? But I contacted the manager, and he said, well, I think next year. But what I'm saying is, all these stakes are still there from December 23rd, and I can't go around pulling them all out. I just, someone's going to have to come get them cleaned up and settle the residents down. So, first of all, the reconsideration of, of two streets, Fulton and Cedar, and the sidewalk or the, the stakes on both sides of Cedar Avenue, if you could.
Counsel McCabe?
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Duran. We did have a presentation at committee, and I know Scott had indicated he would be willing to bring that to council to talk about how they assess our streets in the city, and they do a science-based assessment to determine what streets are kind of in more dire need. And I think sometimes they will do things like pothole repair, or, you know, they won't get in and do the full, I'm sorry, I got a headache tonight, I can't think, what's the word when you get on, Albert, when you do the whole road? Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Twill. Counsel Twill, it's pulverized. Thank you. So they might not do that. But what we can do is, we can certainly have someone go out and just to make sure that everything looked according to what the data says, that they did assess our roads. And then we can also maybe have Scott come in at some point and provide us with that same presentation. I think it was really useful for our committee to hear how they determine what streets are needing to be repaired. I know we all think our streets are needing to repair, and they might be rough, but they do have an actual formula and an assessment, the tool that they use. So, that's what I can tell you based on that. If there's, Albert, do you have anything you might want to add to what he was requesting that I've just indicated?
No. Good. But Counsel McCabe, one thing we need is, is a better deal from the province on this tax sharing, because we only added a million this year. We're not keeping up with the streets, not at all. And that's why we need a better share of tax revenue from the province.
And that will go through strategic priorities when you negotiate with the meetings, right? And that doesn't come through Public Works for tax negotiation?
No, it's been financed. Counsel Twill and then Counsel Duran will come right back to you.
Thank you. You know, along the same, same concerns that Counsel Duran has, you know, we've had neighborhood streets that haven't been pulverized and paved, I would suggest decades. Some of these streets are in a deplorable state. I asked for a reconsideration as well. I, I will reference Bayfield Street from University Avenue to Queen Street, Lower Douglas from Queen Street.
Can I just say a point of order here? I think we had this discussion at the beginning of the council meeting. Is this in the reports? And, you know, I'm not trying to be difficult, but, you know, we just went through this and this entire discussion around Roberts rules. And, and so, Eleanor, can I ask you to clarify? And so, Eleanor, can I ask you to clarify? Or, you know, is, I don't want to cut Counsel Twill off if this is a permitted discussion or not, I apologize if I'm cutting you off.
Yeah, you are.
Just getting.
You are, well, you are.
But we didn't have discussion on specific streets.
No, I know, I know, Counsel, I know, but, I know Counsel McCabe, but these are concerns that have been brought to my attention, and residents have been asking, and I'm not exaggerating when I talk about the state of these streets are in a deplorable condition. And I'm not really sure about the methodology. I mean, I try to understand the methodology, but you can outline the methodology till the cows come home. The bottom line is, these neighborhood streets are not getting the attention that they truly deserve. And, you know, again, it's, we're here for a reason. We're here to bring the concerns forward, and that's all we're trying to do. And I'm doing no different than what Counsel Dron has done. So therefore, I will mention them again, Bayfield Street, Douglas Street, Wendy Drive, Eden, from University Avenue to Queen Street. These neighborhood streets, like, we're way behind, folks. We're way behind. It's, the residents have been patient long enough. They're paying their taxes, you know, and they're just saying, look, we need to have improvements on the infrastructure, and it's not too much to ask. They've waited and waited patiently. So we need to have those discussions, and we need to make neighborhood streets, I would suggest, a priority.
Yeah.
You know, the mayor said we're behind, I agree, we are, we're way behind.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't know why there wasn't more money put in the budget. Anyway, you know, I guess it all depends what the priorities are. But I can tell you that this is a major, major concern in these neighborhood streets. And we can't wait another two and three years. I've done my due diligence, I've sent emails off to senior management in Public Works, but that means, doesn't mean a hill of beans to the residents in the community. They've been more than patient, and we've got to start getting to these neighborhood streets.
Yeah.
With all due respect, we do.
Thank you. Okay. Counsel McCabe, can you just take a couple of the questions? I'm going to finish up with Counsel Dron, so you can have two.
Thank you. And it was about the sidewalk updates and where they're going. We also talked about, for the last number of years, the cul-de-sac in Shamrock, where the drainage wasn't done. I mean, that has nothing to do with sidewalks, but it has to do with, you know, these people have been doing it, asking year after year, and we can't get an answer. We were going to put it in the budget, but we never did. So they're asking, and then the ditch in Philham Parkview Drive from our friend, he asks every week.
Yep.
So I keep saying, I'll bring it up, I'll work with you, I'll ask the Public Works, you know, so that's basically where I wanted to go. I just wanted to ask where we are with the pink stakes, where we are with the sidewalks, and the ditch infill, things like that.
Yeah. No, I'm proud of you, I'm working with him, and he's going to be giving you a call too about something. Counsel McCabe.
What I would suggest, yeah, I can stand up. Yeah, what I would suggest is, what we've been trying to encourage people to do is, if they have things they would like added to our agenda for our committee, that they would email me with specific asks. The operational staff has a conversation with whoever, the manager or whatever, they'll assess, they'll go, they'll look, but we can talk about this. It's not an appropriate venue to talk about specific streets, I wouldn't think, here in the council chamber tonight. And I think someone else wants to speak to give better direction, because we're obviously, someone's not correct.
C A O.
Thank you. Procedurally, Your Worship, you would want to set a notice of motion for reconsideration of the roads that were considered. This isn't something that one or two counselors would direct at Public Works, it needs to be all of council to direct this to Public Works. So you need a motion that'll be voted on, it will have to go to Public Works Committee to be considered, and then come back to council. So perhaps a joint notice of motion with the streets to be reconsidered, or whatever that is, to get that conversation going. Yeah.
Counsel McLeer. Counsel Twill, you've already spoken twice, we're going to move on. Well, go ahead, two minutes.
Yeah. You know, it's great to say that, you know, we're here, you know, this is operational, there's a procedure and all that kind of stuff. You know, we're here to represent our constituents. These are constituency concerns. That's what they are. Okay? We can complicate things by saying, well, this is operational, or we've got to go through this procedure. We're here to represent our constituents and bring those concerns to the forefront. You know, I've done, again, I'll reiterate, I've done my due diligence, I've sent emails off, and, you know, it's just taken too long. It's taking much too long. So these are constituency concerns. There's taxpayers, and they want these streets pulverized and paved, and they want the process expedited. Thank you.
Again, we went through the budget process, right? And we put four million into the streets, and it should be more. And again, I keep saying that we have to get a better deal from the province. Instead of four million, it should be eight million, because we should be doing these more often. Joey McKinnon can tell you, twenty years, some of these streets are twenty years since they were last paved, some of these streets. So that's not fair to any neighborhood. So I agree with you, we need a better deal. Okay. Resolution?
Counsel McCabe, seconded by Counsel McLeer. Be it resolved that council support the Public Works Department partnering with the Boys and Girls Club Charlottetown in hosting the Touch a Truck event in Charlottetown in the fall of 2024. And further that, the city's contribution to this event shall be in kind, including staff time to plan and facilitate the event, the use of city fleet vehicles and equipment, and the provision of garbage collection bins, barricades, and picnic tables.
Question's called. All those in favor? Please, one, seven zero. Want to go with the next one?
Moved by Counsel McCabe, seconded by Counsel McLeer. Be it resolved that in 2023, council approved a resolution for the street resurfacing, Package C, with the understanding that funds for this work would be transferred from University Avenue Rehabilitation Phase One to complete the work, and that the information about the budget transfer was in the support information page for the resolution and not on the resolution page. Therefore, council approves the transfer of funds from the University Avenue Rehabilitation Phase One, 2023-2024 Capital Budget Account, to the roads resurfacing, 2023-2024 Capital Budget Account, in the amount of $1,098,946, plus applicable taxes to cover all costs for the Package C of the 2023 Street Resurfacing Program.
Question's called. All those in favor? Okay, go ahead.
Moved by Counsel McCabe, seconded by Counsel McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for relocation of Hertz Hall, the low submission of W M and M 1993 Limited in the amount of $485,000, plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that a transfer of funds from the Mount Edward Road Transit Depot, 2024-2025 Capital Budget Account, to the Hertz Hall upgrades, 2024-2025 Capital Budget Account, in the amount of $133,500, to cover the costs of the project to be authorized, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question's called, all those in favor? Okay, go ahead.
Moved by Counsel McCabe, seconded by Counsel McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for two single axle four-by-two dump and plow trucks, the low submission of East Coast International Truck in the amount of $799,998, plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Castiel. Question? All those in favor? Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you, Counsel McCabe. Economic tourism and cultural development, Counsel McKinnon.
Thank you, Your Worship. There's been two joint meetings of economic tourism and cultural development in parks and recreation and leisure activities, held on April 24th and 29th. Minutes from these meetings have been included in your package. The Arts Advisory Board met on April 11th, and these minutes are also included in your package. There's no resolutions for your consideration this evening, however, I can offer a few departmental highlights. And afterwards, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that may come forward, and Laurel is here as well to help answer. So firstly, I'd like to welcome to the following businesses who recently opened in downtown Charlottetown. Miles Cycling, Yarica Wholesale Limited, and Oling's General Services. The Second Annual City Hall Open House for Newcomers will take place on May 29th here at City Hall from 5:00 to 7:00. It's a free drop-in style event, open to all new residents who live and work within Charlottetown, whether from either province or either country, and provides an opportunity to tour City Hall, meet the mayor and council, in a comfortable setting, and connect with community through an open dialogue. Staff continuing to process and overhauling the city's economic development tools and resources, most recently completing a content and graphics refresh of the Invest Here portion of the city's website. The 2023 Canada Games Host Society announced a $5.5 million legacy fund yesterday, which will provide funding for projects in sport, that focus on capacity building, equipment, introduction to sport, or facility development. The fund represents the largest financial legacy in Canada Games history. A recent hosting of the event, Atlantic Summit, and East Coast Music Awards Festival and Conference was a huge success for Charlottetown and a great boost for the spring tourism season. A number of elected officials, including myself, had an opportunity to attend both events, and a big shout-out to staff for all of their efforts on these files. Spring is strong for meetings and convention this year, with over 7,000 delegates expected in May and June, including two big fish, the Canadian Counseling and Psychotherapy Association with 450 delegates, and Appraisal Institute of Canada with 400 delegates. Sport events also continue to fill out this shoulder tourism season with Andrews Hockey Growth Programs, Atlantic Two Line Grind Spring Tournament, Red Rock Classic Basketball Tournament, and Atlantic Karate Championships, all scheduled to take place before the end of May. Lastly, a friendly reminder that a major international sport event announcement for fall 2024 is scheduled to take place at City Hall tomorrow morning at 9:30. Hope to see you all there. Thank you, Your Worship. Any questions, I'll try to answer them, and if not, Laurel is here to help.
Counsel Twill.
It's somewhat related to the two meetings that we held, the joint meetings that we held. And I just received information. Hope I'm wrong, and maybe Laurel, you can help. Did Diver City make the request to relocate to Confederation Landing? Or was Diver City encouraged by senior management, City of Charlottetown, to relocate to Confederation Landing? They were permitted to be operational on Queen Street. And I've just received a text message, so I want to know. I thought they went on their own fruition, that this was their decision, this is something that they had initiated. So I need that information, please.
I want to go through Counsel McKinnon first. Counsel McKinnon, do you have anything to share?
Thank you, Counsel Twill. I was also privy to this same information this evening through a text message, and I was going to wait till bring it up to our committee meeting with management, but since it's on the floor, I think it is a question that we need to answer, that I've heard that Diver City was encouraged to go to that location, but I can see somebody from senior management, please.
Laurel's here. Do you want to have her address it?
Yes, please.
So through the mayor, I'm happy to address this. As I mentioned at the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting earlier this week, the Event Logistics Committee did meet with all organizers' events that take place on city streets. Diver City did come in, it was made clear to them in the meeting that Queen Street would be made available to them for the event this year, but that we were having conversations with all events to determine if the street was the best location for their events to continue on. I can confirm tonight that in advance of the Parks and Recreation meeting, I did reach out to the project manager of Diver City to confirm that they were aware that the city was not telling them that they had to go to Confederation Landing, and that if they wished to rescind their request for Confederation Landing, they were welcome to do so, and they confirmed at that time they wanted to proceed with the request to have the event in Confederation Landing.
So just, okay, no, just one second. The chair said, Chair McKinnon, can we take it back? I know, I know. Can we take it back to your committee at the next meeting? Now, hold on, let's, let him, he's the chair. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Your Worship, I like that idea, let's bring it back to our committee when we meet next for discussion, and Counsel Twill, you'll be there as well.
Yeah, he sits on the committee.
We'll discuss it at that time. Thank you.
Yeah, let's, like, we still have an agenda, it's seven o'clock, Counsel. Nope. Get your point on, then I'll be going back to committee, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, the way I understood it, Parks and Rec, please correct me if I'm wrong, that way, paraphrasing, they initiated the request to relocate to Confederation Landing. So this, please help me, Laurel, that the City of Charlottetown did not in any which way, shape, or form encourage Diver City to relocate to Confederation Landing.
Yeah. Laurel, I think you've already answered the question, but you can answer it again. But also, you did reoffer to Diver City, if they wanted to rescind, they could rescind, correct?
That is correct.
For the public record?
Correct.
Okay, so can you just finish, just repeat your answer from what he just asked?
Certainly, so through the mayor to Counsel Twill, as indicated at the meeting earlier in the week, Diver City was brought in for an Event Logistics Committee meeting, where we did discuss the challenges that we were seeing with events on Queen Street. It was made clear to the organizers in that meeting that Queen Street would be made available to them if they wished to proceed withholding the event on Queen Street in 2024. We did discuss Confederation Landing in the meeting, we had a follow-up meeting in Confederation Landing with the organizers, and ultimately, they made the decision to come back to us to formally request Confederation Landing. So we did not indicate that that was the option that they had to go with, and that we were encouraging them to go with, and they were offered the opportunity to rescind that prior to the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, and they indicated at that time they wanted to proceed. So it is my personal understanding that Diver City's wish is to hold the event in Confederation Landing in 2024. As I shared earlier in the week, they may return to Queen Street in 2025, once they evaluate the outcome of this year's event.
Like, for heaven's sakes, you've been there. We've had the festival lights down there at the landing. We had Cirque Soleil. Like, I don't know where this text came from, but again, guys, when we send this information out in the middle of a meeting, I think there's a courtesy to the chair. Well, but the chair was going to leave it to his committee meeting. So, Mr. Chair, McKinnon, we'll leave it for your committee meeting. Thank you. Counsel McLeer.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Just thank you for your report, Counsel McKinnon. And I read with great interest, and you shared in your remarks there, the legacy funding amount that was left over from the Canada Games. Ken Hudson, there's a great article in The Guardian today on that, and that $5 million plus pot, and it looks like there may be opportunities for municipalities, in this case, I guess Charlottetown, to, I'm just wondering, going forward, you know, for the city, what, you know, what approach, or what department, or what area that may fall under in terms of following up on those opportunities with, you know, that pot of money? Would it be economic development or parks, or?
Parks and Recreation, economic development for sure.
Where that would land, or? Where that would land, and or CAO have any comments on that, or just, I think it's an opportunity, and hopefully we can take advantage of it.
Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you, Counsel McLeir, for your question. I'm not familiar where that money's going, so I was going to give it to the CAO or to Laurel to answer.
Through the mayor, the Canada Games Legacy Fund is being administered through the Community Foundation of PEI, so there are parameters that have been developed where the, the city of Charlottetown would be an applicant that would be eligible to apply for funding. I do know that in terms of infrastructure funding, I believe they have said that communities that did not benefit on the front end of Canada Games with infrastructure funding would be viewed more favorably than those communities that did receive infrastructure funding.
Good. I was there for the announcement along with Laurel, and it was 5.5, and I think the province is considered match it, so that's being discussed. But I do want to say, Counsel McKinnon, ECMAs, I know that Laurel and Wayne Long, Laurel, Lee and Wayne Long were head of the team, engagement team. Excellent job. The whole four days were just high energy, high performance, and just a high-quality event, so kudos to all of you. Environment Sustainability, who's presented that report? You are, Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you, Your Worship. It's an absence of the chair. I have a few notes here for environment and sustainability. Just one second. Just trying to get the dates. I know we met, but I can't find the dates. Your, Your Worship? What page? Thank you, Counsel Matert. Wednesday, May 8th, Environment Sustainability met, and minutes are in your package, and we have, I believe it's three resolutions come up. I have a couple of highlights that I'd like to bring up. Environment Sustainability released two reports to inform the Climate Action Plan. These include a future climate projections report and a community greenhouse inventory. To view these reports and stay up to date on progress towards the Climate Action Plan, visit charlottetownhall.ca/climateaction. The department is releasing its annual report highlighting the city's progress toward the goals and actions of the Integrated Community Sustainability Plan and Community Energy Plan. This report can also be accessed on the city's website. On May 4th, the Charlottetown Food Council held the Scraps and Seeds Event. The event involved cooking soup made entirely from surplus food that would have been otherwise gone to waste. Attendees received a sample of the soup, resources on how to reduce food waste at home, and vegetable seeds that thrive in small spaces or containers. The 10-year Transit Plan Report was released and presented to the council of all T3 municipalities for information. Operational plans for expanding service in 2024 are progressing and will result in more frequent bus service and updated schedules starting in July. And planning is underway for a full program of activities for Bike Week from June 17th to the 24th. Stay tuned for updates on the city's website. Thank you, Your Worship. I'll try to answer any questions, and Manager Jessica is here to help with that.
Counsel Twill.
Thank you, Counsel McKinnon, for the report on environment sustainability, and in particular, the reference made to the, the ongoing discussions and consultant's report on the transit, I'd like to recommend to, to city council, that we, we heard from the consultants and from our own staff, I think it'd be prudent that we also hear from the contractors. I think we need to invite them in. I have some questions. I'm not sure if this is accurate or not, but interview had taken place the next morning after the presentation that was made to council. Again, I apologize in advance if I'm wrong, but there was suggestions made that maybe some of the stops in University Avenue would be eliminated, which I'm totally opposed to. I believe that, you know, that this, the system, the logistics, the, the execution of University Avenue, which is a spine, for all those major neighborhood streets funneling into University Avenue, Northwest, North South Connector, I, I'm, I'm just hoping that that was a misquote, that there were no suggestions made, that there would be elimination of any, any stops in University Avenue regardless of where it is. Again, we perfected that system years ago, and it's working quite well, and I believe that, excuse me, University Avenue, as far as the transit goes, it should be, should remain status quo, so I'm going to be looking for a clarification on that. And then, secondly, I will reinforce, you know, our, our contractors are a major player in the delivery of the, of the transit system, and I think we need to, they should have been here that night, presentation was made by the, by the consultant and our own staff. That way we get the total picture. So we need, we need to have, Mr. Mayor, I think we need to have the contractor in before city council.
I think the chair has already reached out, the chair, Terry Bernard, he wants to have that meeting, that meeting at the committee level first.
Sorry?
He wants to have the meeting with the contractor, but we can bring him into council too.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, you know, it's an essential service, it's an important service to all the user groups in this city, so, you know, I understand the process, goes to committee first, but I strongly recommend it also, contractor comes in and meets with council.
Yeah. Counsel McKinnon, do you want to add anything, or do you want Jessica?
No, just comment, thank you, Counsel Twill. We will make sure that it's on the agenda. I'll relay the message to Counsel Bernard for, put it on the committee.
We can go, do you want to go through?
The chair, Jessica?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So I'm thinking the part you're referencing is in the plan. They recommend a standard, which is a common standard for spacing of stops for efficiency of the system, and so they made a recommendation that we look at all our streets to look at what the spacing is and properly space the stops so that they're meeting the normal standards for transit. But there are no recommendations specific to University Avenue.
Okay. Anyways, I know that the chair has asked to bring in T3 owners to speak to the committee, correct?
That was brought up before, and I'll assure everyone here that our operator of our transit system was thoroughly engaged through the whole process of the development of that plan, from the roots to the content of the proposal, and numerous meetings were held with them, with staff, and with CATCC and the consultants.
Okay. Few resolutions?
Moved by Counselor McKinnon, seconded by Deputy Mary Ankaugh. Be it resolved that city, that the city council endorsed the city of Charlottetown's Post Fiona Urban Forest Restoration Strategy, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
All those in favor? Seven zero. Go ahead. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor McKinnon, seconded by Deputy Mary Ankaugh. Be it resolved that council approved the purchase of three additional 40-foot diesel buses from Nova Bus at a cost of $2,442,756.15 plus tax, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel Matert.
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess to the co-chair, possibly. And just reviewing the report, I, I guess what struck me was, we were ordering three diesel buses, and we were looking to order three additional diesel buses. You know, in, in my short time here in council, I, I thought there was a move towards electrification of buses throughout the city as a whole. You know, when I see this, and we're adding six more to the inventory from a diesel perspective, I'm not sure if that's, you know, counter to, to what was, what we were trying to do as, as a city. Maybe there's a great explanation of that, and you can certainly address that. And then, secondly, just so I do clearly understand, so the addition of the three buses to the $2.2 million, that'd be coming out of the ICP fund, is that what I understand? So you really, we're not approving the, that budget today or the spend of that, that's coming through a program, I think it was ICP, is that how you call? So anyways, just to address my first question, I think it's more, just give us a bit of background, if you can, to the chair, to the manager on the, you know, addition of more diesel buses into the fleet. Thank you.
Counsel Matert.
Okay. I'm McKinnon.
Counsel McKinnon.
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for your question, Counsel Matert. I'll take a stab at it, but from what I understand, it's a supply and demand thing right now. We can't get the electric buses as fast as we need them to replace buses that are, need to be replaced. I'll let Jessica clarify this, but this, my understanding, we need buses now, so this is the quickest we can get. We get three now, but we will be replacing with six diesels in the midterm until we can get the electric buses ready.
Jessica?
Through you, Mayor Brown. So in addition to that, as a refresher, this plan has already been through council and approved to do the six diesel buses and amend our ISIP funding agreement, for that being one of the reasons, is we need buses sooner than we can get with electric due to our aging fleet. And the funding is already approved through ISIP, so it's not additional funds, it's already in the ISIP budget.
Counsel Twill.
Thank you, Jessica. I understand, you know, that, that we have to replace some of the fleet. You know, two years ago, I talked to residents and said that we're moving the direction of electric buses, and I think the year was, anticipated year was 2024, that electric buses would arrive here in the city of Charle, in the city of Charlottetown. Now, having said that, I believe that, that, that was the original commitment. So can you give me a timeframe and a timeline as to when the residents in this city can, can expect the arrival of electric buses?
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Counsel Twill, for your question. I will defer that to, I know some of the answers, but I'm, I'm going to let Jessica give you the full answers that you're looking for.
Sure. So in our ISIP agreement, there is a funding agreement with a timeline of spring of 2026 to build a transit depot to provide chargers for electric buses, and those two things have to happen around the same time, because we can't have electric buses without the infrastructure to charge them. So the ISIP agreement, the, the proposed timeline for the launch of that is spring of 2026.
Question? Question's called. All those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Yes? Thank you.
Moved by Counselor McKinnon, seconded by Deputy Mary Ankaugh. Be it resolved that council approved the FCM loan top-up request of $2,780,478, and to match the loan with private capital as provided by Switchpace CIC, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
All those in favor? Seven zero. Finance, audit, tendering, and administration. Counsel John McLeir, Ward 7.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The finance audit, tendering, administration committee met on May 8th, 24. The minutes of that meeting are attached. There's one anticipated resolution to be brought forward from the, which comes from the closed session. Respectfully submitted, I'll do my best to answer any questions you have on, on the report and of that meeting in May 4th, of May 8th.
Looking for the date of the meeting? Are you looking for the date of the meeting? Are you looking for the date?
Yeah, no, no, I, the, the, no, as I said, the committee met May 8th, 2024, the minutes are attached, and I said there's one anticipated resolution that'll be coming forward from the closed session, and I'll do my best to answer any questions that anybody has on the meeting of May 8th.
Counsel Twill.
Thank you for your report, Counsel McLeir. I'm just trying to understand the, the reference made to the procurement bylaw, procedure, procedural review, the update. You know, staff, I guess senior staff is feel that they have to go outside the city's corporation to complete this bylaw. I'm not sure, again, I'll ask about a timeframe and timeline, it's been, you know, it's been on the docket now for a while, and I, I guess I have to ask the question from senior management perspective. I know it's a priority for myself and other members of city council, is it also a priority for senior management, because I just don't see, I don't see it moving forward. I'm not trying to be cynical, but I just don't see it moving forward. No, $100,000 is a lot of money. We have senior staff that I believe can, can do a jurisdictional scan right across Canada to, to, to have that information. I'm not sure why it's such a complex issue. I, I don't understand it. We, we've had a policy in place. I think bylaw would suit the city's corporation very well, suit all of us well. There'd be more predictability, and just like to know why it's, it's, it's not moving forward with that sense of urgency that, that this particular bylaw truly deserves.
Counsel? Counsel McLeir?
Thank you, Counsel Twill. First, like to say, you've been, you've certainly been diligent with your question, you know, on this since, since I've been sitting in the finance chair, and I know you've been more than patient, and, and, you know, I get, you know, I get your frustration. I, I, but I can assure you, we had good debate on this, or I guess good discussion on this at our last committee meeting. I know, I know the CAO has her, has her mic on, and I know Dan, I know Dan, the CFO is here. Is good discussion. There, there is, there is progress being made, Counsel Twill. I, I think that, I feel confident that the staff will have a solution to this within, you know, within this, the six-month timeframe that's been, you know, that's been given. There is a lot more to it than, I guess perhaps, I perhaps realized or understood, you know, myself. There are, there are a number of things that, that have to, that have to happen for this to be comprehensive in its completion, and I'd like to think that, that, you know, as to your question, as to why we have to go outside, I think I'll let Dan Jenkins, I'll let the, maybe defer that to Dan, or I don't know if the CAO wants to chime in on that or not, but there is, there is progress being made. It's going to stay on the committee agenda, finance committee agenda till, you know, till we do get action on it, that's all I can assure you, and thank you. Maybe Dan, if you could.
Can we just, just hold, Counsel Dron, who sits on the finance committee, he has a question too, about this?
Well, it's, it's more of a clarification. I think there's a misinterpretation of the $100,000. I think there's a misinterpretation of the $100,000. We're not, we're not going outside for $100,000. We took that out of the budget. The director, you know, at our last meeting said it's going to take some time with his staff and they're going to work on it and they continue to put it as a priority. But, but nowhere did we say that we're going outside, you know, for the $100,000. That was in the budget, but we dropped that. So I just wanted to clarify that, you know, to you.
CAO, do you want to take it on first or do you want to refer to Dan?
Yes. Thank you, your worship. So just to be clear, administration, we take our direction from councils. So councils priorities are administrations priorities. And as previously explained, it didn't get done over the last year. It was simply just a capacity issue. We brought in the new Director of Corporate Services, the Chief Financial Officer, started earlier this year. There are a lot of things going on in this municipality right now, including a new financial deal with the province, trying to sort out capacity of different members on the team, which takes up a lot of time. And so I know Mr. Jenkins can speak to this a little bit more in detail, but it is a priority. It's just simply finding the capacity to get the work done. And that's what we're doing right now. If you want to go ahead.
Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you. Through the chair to Counselor Twill. I can assure you that your fellow counselors on the finance committee have elevated the importance of this particular bylaw development to me personally and to the CAO and are relentless, quite frankly, in terms of their insistence that we, that we keep this a priority. And, and we take that seriously at staff. I've met with staff on this specific issue last week. I have another meeting with two staff members tomorrow on the same issue. We will do as much as we can of the work internally, but we want to be respectful of the time that we've, that we've identified in terms of delivering something back to council to consider in terms of the bylaw. And there is a fair bit of work, not just in drafting the bylaw, but the policies and procedures that go along with that. And, and it has been said, I think, is worship, use the words, that we don't, we don't raise money, we spend it, and we do. You know, we expect we'll spend about $180 million this year. And the procurement bylaw in partnership with our budget approval and document is really the primary tool we have to keep in our spending in, within guidelines of procurement and getting best value for the city. So we, I can give you my personal assurance that it is a priority and we fully intend on developing a project plan to get it, get it back to council within six months. And, and if we need resources, we do have some budget allocated so that if, if our project plan looks like we're not going to meet that timeline, then, then we would look to, to bring in some, some extra help. The finance, the finance staff are lean. There's been a lot of turnover and we've lost some corporate history in the procurement side. So, so it is a challenge with, with the staff complement that we have now, just because they're, they're working hard just to keep up in the day-to-day and this is really policy work. So we, you know, that's certainly work that I feel is important and we'll, we'll do our very best to, to get it top, top of the list.
And Counselor Twill, I've repeated this several times, that this goes back to the past senior administration that you were asking these questions, to the past senior administration upstairs. So I know with this new administration, they're just catching up, but the question will be there. He's saying six months, so put that as your flag. We have a resolution, don't we? Or do you have a question? No resolutions now? Okay. Okay. Who's still on strategic priorities? Okay?
Uh, no one asked.
Nope. Okay. Do you want to group strategic priorities?
Thank you, your worship. So the strategic priorities and communications and intergovernmental cooperation committee met on April the 10th and May the 2nd. The minutes are in your package. We have one resolution for your consideration and I hope everyone had the opportunity to read the reports because it was quite a lengthy discussion for information purposes for, for you folks. So I'll do my best to answer any questions or I can take them back to committee for Counselor Beck. Thank you.
Counselor Twill.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. I think at the first committee meeting, I attended the meeting, two issues I brought forward. One was talk about the stopping the distribution of drug paraphernalia with the needles and crack pipes that are ending up in our parks, playgrounds, sports fields, historic squares. Local businesses have complained about folks that have, you know, addiction challenges that are on their property, in their washrooms, and around their properties, having a tremendous amount of difficulty. One of the things I did request was for the chief medical officer to come in, meet with city council. I think the time, the time is appropriate considering what is taking place across this country with the reversal of, you know, the whole issue of drugs and decriminalization versus re-criminalization. British Columbia, for example, the premier has petitioned the prime minister, the prime minister has agreed to reverse the, reverse the, you know, legislation. Ontario, province of Quebec, the emphasis on rehabilitation, proper medical treatment administered by medical practitioners, doctors, people in the medical field with the credentials and qualifications. And that's part of, part of the bylaw I was proposing. We need to protect our neighborhoods and communities. Trying to be proactive here. I want this bylaw to be truly comprehensive, to be contemporary, and to be thought-provoking. I think a lot of residents in this city have been ahead of the curve, particularly over the last year. And we want to ensure that we're going to continue on with progress. So I know there's more work that needs to be done, there's more research that needs to be done. So I am optimistic that we'll be coming forward with bylaws truly all-encompassing. And I certainly appreciate the opportunity to appreciate, to, to appear before the committee. So just want to, you know, keep the ball moving, moving down the field and send a clear message to our residents that we understand the plight of what's taking place in our neighborhoods and communities. Because I can tell you, and you know this, everyone knows of this in this chamber, a lot of our residents are scared, they're intimidated, and they just, they just want, you know, predictability in terms of, you know, hey, what they can expect in their neighborhood. And I don't believe that's being unreasonable. So I want to thank the committee for, for, you know, continuing on and thank you.
Peace and security. That's a good, put Counselor Dron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. And thank you, Counselor Twill. I agree 100% of what you're trying to do, but I just can't understand, you know, the clarification on the bylaw. We're trying to, to put a bylaw in place. You know, the number one priority is illegal drug use. It's, it's illegal. It's against the criminal code of Canada. So I, I can't believe, or I don't want to lessen that. You know, you're not allowed to do illegal drugs anywhere. So, you know, I don't understand if a police officer sees this, why they can't be arrested. Now, there's been excuses upon excuses of saying, well, we have to adapt, we have to, you know, the federal prosecutor doesn't want to, to arrest or prosecute these type of offenses. But at the end of the day, it's either black or white. It's illegal or it's not. So, you know, I'm 100% with you, but I just don't know where we're going with this. You know, I don't want to lessen the, the legalities of being against the criminal code. That's, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
Criminal code is supreme. That's the, yeah. Counselor, we'll just wrap it up because it'll go back to committee. That's where we're going back to.
Yeah. No, Counselor Dron, I want to thank you, first of all, for your support right from day one. You know, you, you've been a strong champion as well. Because what's happened here in our city over the last two or three years has just been a total unmitigated disaster. And we need to turn this ship around and we need to turn that 18-wheeler around. And I believe we're taking the steps necessary. So I, you know, I can honestly say now, and one of our folks that I've been working with here, Frank, I want to thank you for all the work you've done. You've been a pioneer for the last 35, 40 years. So can't thank Frank Morrison enough. But no, we're, we're, I believe we're heading in the right direction. I really do. And I'm optimistic that we're going to put the mechanisms in place, bylaw in place with all the different, you know, criteria that we truly need to send an unequivocal, clear message to the community, this will not be tolerated.
Thank you.
Not here in the city of Sherlton. Those days are over.
Thank you. So deputy, that'll go back to Chairman Beck. Okay. I'd like to look at those other provinces, be, see what's going on and have those part of the report. So do we have a one resolution? Do you want to read that?
Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McKinnon. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the request for proposals for Parkdale Committee Room, the submission of Ivan's AV in the amount of $58,480.75 plus all applicable taxes be accepted and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against. Counselor Dron, six one.
Do you have a resolution?
No, it's just two. Just one, just the one, sir.
The investigation, is that still under consideration or? What?
Oh, no, that's, that, that has to come back. That has to come back. That's, that's another meeting. That's, we couldn't cut down the agenda. And counselors.
If the illegal drug use is up news or?
Counselors.
Did we have a motion, Mr. Mayor?
No.
You didn't?
No.
Was there a motion approved at the meeting?
What meeting?
The meeting I attended to send it out to the outlets? Where's that?
Deputy, deputy, it's in the report.
That, it is in the report, but it hasn't, it didn't go back to committee because the committee had too many things on the agenda. So when the meeting that Counselor Twill attended on April 10th, where the independent investigation into illegal drug use at the outreach center, the report is still in your package under the minutes, but it's going back to committee because it hasn't gone, it hasn't gone anywhere else since that meeting, from my understanding. It wasn't on our, on our May agenda.
Yeah. Yeah. No.
Yeah.
It'll be back. It'll go back to the committee, correct? Okay. I have 6.11, motion to move into a closed session as per section 119 subsection 1E and F of the Municipal Government Act of Prince Edward Island. E, a matter still under consideration on which the council has not yet publicly announced a decision and about which discussion in public would likely prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its negotiations. And it's regarding payroll software contract. F, which is part of 119 subsection 1F, the conduct of existing or anticipated legal proceedings or the review of legal advice, request for expression of interest, REOI matter. So, yeah, I need, I need to, someone to move in, move it. Moved by Counselor McKinnon, seconded by Counselor Twill. All those in favor?
Counselor what?
In closed session. Yep. Yep. Yep.
So we close the meeting, adjourn the closed meeting, open the meeting to the public. Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, right here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.